A respected black city councilman known for his fierce advocacy for police reform was unjustly targeted and brutally tased by a racist cop during a peaceful community event. The officer, embodying the very corruption the councilman fought against, thought he was silencing a critic. He never dreamed that this shocking act of violence captured on multiple cameras would galvanize the entire city council, leading them to not just condemn the act, but to take the unprecedented step of completely defunding the officer's entire problematic unit. Viewers, welcome back. Today's story is a stark look at the abuse of power and the electrifying consequences when a community and its leaders say enough. It's about a public servant assaulted for speaking truth and the political earthquake that followed. If stories of courage, accountability, and systemic change resonate with you, please subscribe and join our ongoing conversation. Your support helps us illuminate these crucial narratives. Thank you for being here as we delve into this shocking confrontation and its powerful aftermath. Councilman Julian Hayes was a force of nature in the often-stayed chambers of Oakhaven City Hall. At thirty-eight, he was the youngest member ever elected to the city council, representing the underserved predominantly-black district of Elmwood Heights. He was charismatic, articulate, and possessed an unshakable commitment to social justice, a firebrand progressive in a city council, often dominated by more conservative entrenched interests. Julian wasn't a career politician. He was a former community organizer, a teacher, a man who had risen from the very streets he now fought to uplift. His constituents adored him for his authenticity, his accessibility, and his refusal to be silenced or cowed by the city's powerful old guard. His primary crusade, the issue that had propelled him into office and defined his tenure, was comprehensive police reform. He had seen firsthand the impact of biased policing, excessive force, and a lack of accountability on his community, and he was determined to bring about meaningful change. Julian's hidden power was not a secret benefactor or a hidden agenda. It was the genuine passionate support of his constituents, his brilliant oratory skills that could sway even the most skeptical listeners, his meticulous research that armed him with irrefutable facts, and his unwavering moral compass. He was also a master strategist, understanding the intricate dance of city politics, knowing when to push, when to negotiate, and when to rally public opinion to his cause. He was, in short, a formidable opponent to those who wished to maintain the status quo, especially within the Oakhaven Police Department, OPD. One of his main targets for reform was the OPD's controversial Street Crimes Unit, SCU. Ostensibly created to combat violent crime and drug trafficking, the SCU had, under the de facto leadership of Sergeant Frank Rourke, devolved into what many in Elmwood Heights considered a glorified street gang with badges. The unit was notorious for its aggressive jump-out tactics, its high rate of questionable stops and frisks, overwhelmingly targeting young black men, its numerous citizen complaints for excessive force and verbal abuse, and its almost-complete lack of transparency and accountability. Sergeant Rourke, a throwback to an older, more brutal era of policing, ran the SCU like his personal fiefdom, contemptuous of civilian oversight, and particularly dismissive of armchair critics like Councilman Hayes. Rourke saw Hayes not as a duly-elected official representing his constituents, but as a dangerous agitator, a cop-hater who was undermining law and order. The animosity between the two men was palpable, a constant simmer beneath the surface of city politics. Hayes had been relentlessly pushing for an independent audit of the SCU, for body cameras for all its members, which Rourke vehemently opposed, and ultimately for its complete disbandment and a reallocation of its bloated budget towards community-based violence prevention programs. The annual Elmwood Heights Community Unity Day was in full swing. It was a vibrant, joyous affair held in the district's largest park, music thumping, barbecue smoke filling the air, children laughing as they bounced in inflatable castles, local vendors selling crafts and food. Councilman Hayes was in his element, moving through the crowd, shaking hands, listening to concerns, his infectious laugh echoing through the park. He was dressed casually in jeans, a polo shirt bearing the Elmwood Unity logo, and sneakers, indistinguishable from many of his constituents. He was there not just as a politician, but as a member of the community, a neighbor, a friend. He had just finished giving an impromptu speech from the small park gazebo, reiterating his commitment to fighting for better schools, safer streets, and, pointedly, a police department that served and protected all its citizens with respect and fairness. The applause had been thunderous. Sergeant Rourke and several members of his Street Crimes Unit were also present, ostensibly for "community policing" and "security." In reality, their presence felt more like an occupying force. They stood in a tight, intimidating knot near the park entrance, their arms crossed, their expressions stony, their tactical vests and visible sidearms, a stark contrast to the festive atmosphere. Rourke, in particular, seemed to be watching Councilman Hayes with a venomous intensity. He had been infuriated by Hayes' recent op-ed in the Oakhaven Chronicle, which had scathingly criticized the SCU's tactics and called for an immediate budget freeze pending a full investigation. The councilman was a thorn in his side, a threat to his power, and Rourke was a man who did not tolerate threats. As Julian Hayes stepped down from the gazebo, still surrounded by well-wishers, a minor scuffle broke out near a basketball court on the far side of the park. Two teenagers caught up in the heat of a game had started shoving each other. It was a typical short-lived burst of adolescent testosterone quickly being de-escalated by older onlookers. It was not a major incident, certainly not one requiring the intervention of a heavily armed tactical unit, but for Sergeant Rourke, it was a pretext, an opportunity he had perhaps been waiting for. "All right, move," Rourke barked at his SCU officers. "Let's go show these punks what real order looks like." He and his team began to stride purposefully, aggressively, towards the basketball court, their very approach designed to intimidate rather than de-escalate. Councilman Hayes, seeing the SCU's disproportionate response and fearing an unnecessary escalation that could mar the Community Day, immediately moved to intervene. He knew Rourke's reputation. He knew how quickly situations could spin out of control when the SCU was involved. He had no idea he was walking directly into a trap, a confrontation that Rourke perhaps intended to provoke, one that would end with a jolt of electricity and ignite a political firestorm. Councilman Julian Hayes moved quickly but calmly towards the scene of the minor altercation, his intent clear: to de-escalate, to mediate, to prevent Sergeant Rourke's Street Crimes Unit from turning a teenage squabble into a full-blown incident that would terrorize the community and undermine the spirit of Unity Day. He arrived just as Rourke and his officers, their faces set in grim, aggressive lines, were beginning to wade into the crowd of onlookers that had gathered around the basketball court. The two teenagers involved in the initial shoving match had already been separated by older men from the neighborhood, and the situation was visibly calming down. "Sergeant Rourke," Julian called out, his voice firm but non-confrontational, projecting an air of authority that came naturally to him. "Hold your men. The situation is under control. Community members are handling it. There's no need for this level of force." He gestured towards the now-separated teenagers, who looked more sheepish than aggressive. Rourke, who had clearly been anticipating a more dramatic intervention, whirled around, his eyes fixing on Julian with a look of pure venom. This was the moment he'd perhaps been angling for, a public confrontation with the councilman who was actively trying to dismantle his unit. "Councilman Hayes," Rourke sneered, his voice dripping with sarcasm. "Fancy seeing you here meddling in police business as usual. Why don't you stick to your tea parties at City Hall and let real law enforcement handle actual street problems?" Several of Rourke's SCU officers chuckled sycophantically, their expressions mirroring their sergeant's contempt. The crowd of community members, however, murmured with disapproval at Rourke's blatant disrespect for their elected representative. Julian ignored the jibe, his focus remaining on de-escalation. "Sergeant, this is my district, and this is a community event I helped organize. My concern is for the safety and well-being of everyone here. Your team's aggressive approach is unnecessary and is likely to inflame tensions, not calm them. I am asking you to stand down and allow the community to resolve this minor dispute peacefully, which they are already doing." "Minor dispute?" Rourke scoffed, taking a menacing step towards Julian. "I see potential gang activity, public disorder, resisting arrest in the making. This is exactly the kind of element my unit is here to stamp out, councilman. Whether you and your soft-on-crime policies like it or not," he jabbed a finger aggressively towards Julian's chest. "You politicians are all the same, pontificating from your ivory towers, no idea what it's like on the real streets. You're obstructing my officers from performing their lawful duties." "I am obstructing no one, Sergeant," Julian countered, his voice rising slightly, though he maintained his composure. He refused to be baited into an emotional outburst. "I am attempting to prevent an unnecessary escalation by your unit, which has a documented history of using excessive force and inflaming community relations. Your presence here in this aggressive posture is the primary source of tension." He held Rourke's gaze, unflinching. The atmosphere was now electric. The festive sounds of Unity Day, the music, the laughter, had faded, replaced by an uneasy silence as the crowd watched the tense standoff between their councilman and the belligerent police sergeant. Smartphones were emerging discreetly at first, then more openly as residents began to record the confrontation. They had seen this play out before with Rourke and his SCU, the bullying tactics, the manufactured provocations. Rourke, infuriated by Julian's calm defiance and the clear support the councilman had from the onlookers, decided to escalate. "You're interfering with an active police operation, Hayes," he yelled, his face flushing a deep, angry crimson. "That's a crime. You're inciting a crowd. I'm warning you, back off now or I'll place you under arrest." "Arrest me, Sergeant?" Julian raised an eyebrow, his voice laced with incredulity. "Arrest a city councilman for attempting to ensure peace at a community event in his own district? On what possible charge? For disagreeing with your heavy-handed tactics? For obstruction? For inciting a riot? For whatever damned charge I deem appropriate?" Rourke roared, his self-control clearly unraveling. He was losing face in front of the community, in front of his own men, and in front of the councilman he despised. He needed to reassert his dominance quickly and decisively. He made a sharp gesture to two of his officers. "Cuff him." The two SCU officers, looking momentarily uncertain but unwilling to disobey a direct order from their sergeant, moved towards Julian. The crowd gasped, then erupted in shouts of protest. "Leave him alone. He ain't done nothing." "Rourke, you're out of line." Julian stood his ground, his hands held open at his sides, in a non-threatening posture. "Officers," he said, addressing the two advancing cops, "I am not resisting, but I am informing you that any attempt to unlawfully detain or arrest me will be met with the full force of legal action. Sergeant Rourke is acting out of personal animosity and a clear abuse of his authority." The officers hesitated, their eyes flicking nervously between Julian, Rourke, and the increasingly agitated crowd. They were caught in an untenable position. Rourke, seeing their hesitation and perhaps fearing that the situation was slipping from his grasp, made his fateful catastrophic decision. "He's resisting!" Rourke screamed, pulling out his taser. "He's resisting arrest. Tase him. Tase him now." Before Julian could react, before anyone in the crowd could intervene, Sergeant Rourke himself lunged forward. He didn't wait for his officers. Driven by a potent cocktail of rage, frustration, and a desperate need to reassert his authority, he bypassed his own men and jammed the prongs of his taser directly against Julian Hayes' side. The sickening crackle of the taser, the bright blue arc of electricity, and Julian's involuntary cry of agony as fifty thousand volts surged through his body were captured by dozens of smartphones. He collapsed to the ground, his body convulsing, his face a mask of shock and unbearable pain. The crowd screamed, a collective roar of outrage and horror. Sergeant Rourke stood over the fallen councilman, his taser still pointed, his chest heaving, a triumphant, almost manic glint in his eyes. He had silenced his critic, put him in his place, asserted his dominance. He had no idea that the jolt of electricity he had just sent through Julian Hayes' body was also an electrifying shockwave that would bring the entire edifice of his corrupt unit and potentially the city's political establishment crashing down around him. The game had just changed, dramatically and irrevocably. The sight of Councilman Julian Hayes writhing on the ground, his body convulsing from the brutal application of Sergeant Rourke's taser, sent a shockwave of pure, unadulterated rage through the Elmwood Heights community. The festive atmosphere of Unity Day curdled into a scene of horror and disbelief. Children were crying, shielded by their parents. Adults were shouting, their voices a cacophony of anger and fear. Dozens of smartphones, which had been discreetly recording the escalating confrontation, were now held aloft, capturing every horrifying second of Rourke's assault and its immediate aftermath. The footage was already being uploaded, shared, a digital torrent of outrage spreading beyond the confines of the park with lightning speed. Sergeant Rourke, standing over the incapacitated councilman, his taser still menacingly displayed, seemed momentarily oblivious to the inferno of fury he had just ignited. His face was flushed with a mixture of adrenaline and a twisted sense of triumph. He had in his mind neutralized a threat, silenced a critic, put an uppity politician in his place. He barked at his SCU officers, who looked stunned and increasingly uneasy. "Secure the prisoner. Get him in cuffs and disperse this crowd. This is now an unlawful assembly." But the crowd was not to be easily dispersed. They were no longer just onlookers. They were witnesses to a brutal, unprovoked assault on their elected representative, a man they loved and respected. They surged forward, not aggressively, but with a palpable sense of protective fury, forming a human barrier between Rourke's officers and their fallen councilmen. "Shame on you, Rourke," a woman screamed, her voice cracking with emotion. "He was trying to keep the peace, you damn bully." An elderly man, leaning heavily on a cane, pointed a trembling finger at the sergeant. "You're a disgrace to that badge. A disgrace to this city." Julian Hayes, the effects of the taser slowly beginning to subside, pushed himself up onto his elbows, his body still trembling, his breath coming in ragged gasps. His colleagues from the city council staff and several community leaders rushed to his side, helping him to sit up, shielding him from any further aggression from Rourke's men. His eyes, though filled with pain, also held a new steely resolve. This was no longer just a political battle. It was a personal one, an assault not just on him, but on the very principles of democracy and justice he had sworn to uphold. The hidden power in this equation was now fully, dramatically engaged. It wasn't a secret weapon. It was the raw, undeniable power of public opinion amplified by irrefutable video evidence and channeled through the political outrage of Julian's colleagues on the city council. Within minutes of the tasering, footage of the incident was blazing across social media, Facebook livestreams, Twitter clips, Instagram stories. The hashtag #TasedForTruth, created spontaneously by a young activist in the crowd, began trending locally, then regionally. News of the assault reached City Hall with stunning speed. Council President Angela Marino, a pragmatic moderate who had often found herself at odds with Julian Hayes' more aggressive reform agenda but deeply respected his integrity, saw the footage on her aide's phone and reportedly gasped, "Oh my God. Rourke has finally lost his mind." She immediately began a flurry of calls to other councilmembers, to the mayor, to the city attorney. The political calculus of Oakhaven was being rewritten in real time. This was no longer an internal OPD matter or a squabble between a councilman and a police sergeant. This was a direct assault on an elected official, a blatant abuse of power captured for the world to see, and it demanded an immediate, unequivocal response. Mayor Tom Wilkins, a cautious, consensus-building politician who usually tried to avoid direct confrontation with the powerful police union, knew instantly that this was a crisis that could define or destroy his administration. The visual of a respected councilman being tased by a notorious police sergeant at a peaceful community event was political dynamite. He issued a terse preliminary statement expressing deep concern and promising a full and immediate investigation, but privately, he was seething. Rourke, and by extension, the problematic Street Crimes Unit, had become an intolerable liability. Back at the park, the situation remained incredibly tense. OPD patrol cars, sirens screaming, began to arrive in force, summoned by Rourke's earlier calls for backup before the tasering. However, the newly arriving officers, many of whom were from different precincts and not part of Rourke's insular SCU, were met with a wall of angry but non-violent community members protectively surrounding Julian Hayes. They also saw several of Julian's city council colleagues, who had been at the event and were now on their phones, their voices sharp with outrage, speaking to high-ranking city officials. The scene was chaotic, volatile, and Rourke's attempts to assert control were increasingly futile. He was no longer the enforcer, he was the eye of a hurricane of his own making. Paramedics arrived and began to assess Julian, who, though shaken and in considerable pain, refused to be taken to the hospital immediately. "I am fine," he insisted, his voice still raspy, "but this, this outrage will not stand. Sergeant Rourke assaulted me without provocation. He abused his authority, and his entire unit has been terrorizing my community for far too long." This ends today. His words, though spoken weakly, carried the weight of an ironclad promise. The political fallout was immediate and catastrophic for Sergeant Rourke and his Street Crimes Unit. An emergency session of the Oakhaven City Council was called for the very next morning. The agenda: the assault on Councilman Hayes and the future of the SCU. The council chamber was packed. Julian Hayes, though visibly bruised and still aching, was present, his colleagues flanking him in a show of solidarity that transcended political differences. The public gallery overflowed with furious residents from Elmwood Heights and concerned citizens from across the city. The atmosphere was electric, charged with an almost revolutionary fervor. This was Oakhaven's moment of reckoning. The council meeting was unlike any Oakhaven had ever seen. One by one, councilmembers, even those who had previously been hesitant to challenge the police department, rose to condemn Sergeant Rourke's actions in the strongest possible terms. The video footage played on large screens in the chamber was irrefutable, sickening. Rourke's defense, offered through a beleaguered police union lawyer, Rourke himself had been immediately suspended and was not present, that he had felt threatened and that Councilman Hayes was interfering, was met with open derision. Council President Marino, her voice trembling with controlled anger, spoke for many. What we witnessed yesterday was not policing, it was a brutal, thuggish assault on a member of this council, on a community leader, on the very principles of democratic oversight. Sergeant Rourke is a disgrace to his badge. But this is not just about one rogue officer. It is about a unit, the Street Crimes Unit, that has operated with impunity for far too long, a unit that has fostered a culture of aggression, bias, and contempt for the citizens it is sworn to serve. It is a cancer within our police department. Then came the moment that would redefine Oakhaven politics. Councilman Julian Hayes, rising slowly but steadily to his feet, addressed his colleagues and the packed gallery. He didn't speak of his pain or his anger. He spoke of his constituents, of their fear, of their longstanding grievances against the SCU. He spoke of the need for accountability, for systemic change, for a police department that truly served all its people. And then, he made his motion. "Therefore, Madam President," Julian declared, his voice ringing with conviction, "I move that the Oakhaven City Council, effective immediately, exercise its full budgetary authority to completely defund the Oakhaven Police Department's Street Crimes Unit. I further move that all funds previously allocated to this unit be immediately redirected to community-based violence interruption programs, youth services in Elmwood Heights, and the establishment of a fully empowered, independent, civilian oversight board for the OPD. It is time to stop funding abuse and start funding solutions." A stunned silence fell over the chamber, followed by a deafening roar of applause and shouts of support from the gallery. The motion was audacious, unprecedented. Defunding an entire police unit was a radical step, one that many would have deemed unthinkable just twenty-four hours earlier. But the tasering of Julian Hayes had been a political earthquake, shifting the tectonic plates of Oakhaven's power structure. His colleagues, seeing the irrefutable video, hearing the impassioned testimony of their community, and perhaps sensing the direction of the political winds, found a courage many didn't know they possessed. The debate was intense but surprisingly brief. The moral clarity of the situation, amplified by the visceral impact of the taser footage, was overwhelming. When the vote was called, it was decisive. By a near-unanimous margin, the Oakhaven City Council voted to defund the Street Crimes Unit. Sergeant Rourke's reign of terror was over. The unit he had built into his personal instrument of intimidation was no more. The jolt of electricity he had sent through Julian Hayes' body had, in a spectacular display of political irony, short-circuited his own power base and triggered a fundamental realignment of policing priorities in the city of Oakhaven. The people, through their elected representatives, had spoken, and their voice was a thunderous demand for change. The Oakhaven City Council's vote to defund Sergeant Rourke's notorious Street Crimes Unit was not just a political decision, it was a seismic shift in the city's approach to public safety and police accountability, a direct and stunning consequence of Rourke's brazen assault on Councilman Julian Hayes. The news spread through Oakhaven like wildfire, eliciting cheers and celebrations in Elmwood Heights, and shock and consternation in the corridors of the OPD and the police union headquarters. For Sergeant Frank Rourke, the fallout was catastrophic and immediate. Already suspended, he now found himself the architect of his own unit's demise, a pariah within the department and the city. The Internal Affairs investigation, now supercharged by the city council's decisive action and the glare of intense media scrutiny, the taser video was now national news, proceeded with unprecedented speed. Rourke's long history of citizen complaints, his aggressive tactics, his documented insubordinate Rourke's long history of citizen complaints, his aggressive tactics, his documented insubordination to departmental policies regarding de-escalation and community engagement, all came under a harsh, unforgiving spotlight. Faced with irrefutable video evidence of an unprovoked assault on an elected official and a mountain of corroborating testimony about his unit's reign of terror, Rourke was summarily fired from the Oak Haven Police Department. His law enforcement career, built on bullying and brutality, ended in utter disgrace. The district attorney, under immense public pressure, also convened a grand jury, which ultimately indicted Rourke on charges of felony assault, battery, and official misconduct. His day in criminal court was yet to come, but his power was irrevocably broken. The disbandment of the Street Crimes Unit sent a powerful message. Through the ranks of the O P D, officers who had thrived under Rourke's aggressive, unaccountable style, found themselves reassigned, retrained, or choosing early retirement. Chief of Police Michael Thompson, a man who had often seemed to turn a blind eye to the S C U's excesses, now found his own position precarious. The city council, emboldened by their newfound resolve and backed by overwhelming public support, initiated a comprehensive review of O P D leadership, policies, and training protocols. Chief Thompson, seeing the writing on the wall, announced his resignation a few weeks later, paving the way for a new era of leadership committed to genuine reform. Councilman Julian Hayes, though still recovering physically and emotionally from the assault, became a reluctant hero, a symbol of courage and principled leadership. He worked tirelessly with his colleagues, community leaders, and even reform-minded police officers to ensure that the funds reallocated from the S C U were invested wisely and effectively in programs that addressed the root causes of crime: poverty, lack of opportunity, mental health issues, and fostered genuine community safety. The Elmwood Heights Youth Center received a major funding boost. New mental health crisis response teams, composed of social workers and medical professionals, were established to work alongside and sometimes instead of, police officers in certain situations. The promised independent civilian oversight board was created, with real subpoena power and the authority to recommend disciplinary actions, giving citizens a genuine voice in policing their own communities. The changes were not immediate or easy. There was resistance from the police union, from some conservative factions in the city, who feared that defunding would lead to an increase in crime. But Julian Hayes and his allies held firm, presenting data, engaging in community dialogues and building broad coalitions of support. They argued persuasively that true public safety was not just about arrests and patrols, it was about investment in people, in communities, in solutions that prevented crime before it happened. The legacy of that shocking moment in the park, the crackle of the taser, the fall of a councilman, the roar of an outraged community, was profound and lasting. It demonstrated that even the most entrenched systems of power and abuse could be challenged and changed when citizens and their elected leaders found the courage to act decisively. It proved that video evidence in the age of social media could be a potent catalyst for accountability, bypassing traditional gatekeepers and taking the truth directly to the people. And it showed that defunding a problematic police unit was not a radical fantasy but a viable, practical tool for reallocating resources towards more effective, humane, and just approaches to public safety. Julian Hayes continued to serve on the city council, his voice now carrying even greater weight, his commitment to his community even more profound. He never forgot the searing pain of Rourke's taser, but he transformed that pain into a relentless drive for justice and reform. Oak Haven was still a work in progress, but thanks to the courage sparked by one brutal act of violence, it was a city slowly, painstakingly, learning to redefine what it meant, to truly protect and serve all its people. The jolt that brought down a councilman had, in the end, electrified an entire city into demanding and achieving a new beginning. The tasing of Councilman Julian Hayes by Sergeant Rourke was a horrifying spectacle, a visceral demonstration of how unchecked police power, fueled by racial animus and personal vendetta, can erupt into blatant violence against even a duly-elected public official. Rourke's actions were not a lapse in judgment in a heated moment. They were the culmination of a pattern of aggression, a thuggish attempt to silence a prominent critic and intimidate an entire community. He saw Councilman Hayes not as a representative of the people, but as an obstacle to his own corrupt and brutal brand of law enforcement. This story is a powerful testament to the courage of individuals who dare to speak truth to power, and the extraordinary potential for change when a community and its leaders unite against injustice. Councilman Hayes, despite being physically assaulted, refused to be silenced. His hidden power lay in his unwavering commitment to his constituents, his articulate advocacy for reform, and his ability to inspire collective action. The immediate, widespread dissemination of video evidence of the assault played a crucial role, stripping away any ambiguity and galvanizing public outrage. The Oak Haven City Council's decision to defund the entire Street Crimes Unit was a bold and unprecedented response, demonstrating that political will, when sufficiently motivated by public pressure and moral clarity, can indeed lead to radical systemic change. It was a recognition that some units, some policing philosophies, are so inherently toxic and damaging that mere reform is insufficient. Complete dismantlement and a reallocation of resources towards community-based solutions are necessary. This act was not merely punitive, it was a visionary step towards redefining public safety, prioritizing investment in people, and preventative measures over purely reactive and often biased enforcement. The legacy of this event is a story of transformation. It's about how a brutal act of violence intended to suppress dissent, instead ignited a movement for profound and lasting reform. It highlights the critical role of civilian oversight, the importance of transparent and accountable policing, and the power of budgetary decisions to reshape law enforcement priorities. It reminds us that true public safety is built on trust, respect, and a shared commitment to justice, not on fear, intimidation, and the abuse of power. Councilman Hayes' ordeal, though deeply personal and painful, ultimately served as a catalyst for a more just and equitable Oak Haven. If this story of a public servant's courageous stand and a city's bold move towards reform has resonated with you, please engage with our content. Like this video, subscribe for more narratives that challenge the status quo, and hit the notification bell so you won't miss what's next. Share your thoughts in the comments. What role should civilian oversight play in policing? And how can communities ensure their voices are heard in demanding accountability and change? Your participation fuels these vital conversations. Thank you for joining us.